I would like to convene the regular meeting of the Larkspur City Council for Wednesday, July 19th. It is approximately 6:32 in the evening, and if we could have our roll call.
Council member two.
Here.
Council member way.
Here.
Council member Morrison.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hillmer.
Here.
Mayor Harof.
Here. And with that, for those who are able, could you all please rise and we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to its republic, to its citizens. For my nation, I am God, and His people, and everything and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, everyone. We'll move on to agenda item number two, which is presentations and proclamations. We have nothing on the agenda, although we do have a special one to introduce our new city clerk. And with that, I'll turn it over to Dan for an introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. This is a first for me, actually. It's the first time in my career I've hired a city clerk. I've been fortunate to have had a very long tenured clerks work with me in the past. It's been a very interesting experience to learn more about the clerk world, and I can't be more pleased with the candidate that we've selected. She started on Monday, and I think she was here five minutes, and Mayor Harof actually showed up to pull his papers for being a candidate in the election. So, we gave her five minutes to catch her breath, and then we made her start working. But I'm very pleased.
She saved the day, by the way.
Yeah, I was gonna screw it up, so it's good. I'm very, very pleased to introduce the council and the community to Jamie Carrillo, who's come to us after working most recently as the district, in the Tahoe Fire Protection District, North Tahoe Fire Protection District, where she was not only an analytical support staff person, she was also the secretary to the board. And before that, she worked in the elections office at San Mateo, so she's bringing us a good breadth of the types of skills you need to be a city clerk. And James hit the ground running. I think folks spent a may. She's already been reorganizing all the files, so I have all the confidence that we're in great hands. One thing I realized, though, is clerk is a designated position in the municipal code, a little bit more elevated in stature in some respects, and it would be very appropriate to conduct an oath of office in a more of a ceremony. So, we've asked the mayor to use this space on the agenda, if he would, to give the oath of office to Jamie as she joins us. And so, Jamie, if you want to come on up.
That'd be my pleasure.
And next time, she'll do the roll, by the way. I'm done doing the roll calls. I've come close to messing. You come up here, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Jamie, you're on television.
Well, this is a treat for me, and a first, and welcome. We're very happy to have you. So, we'll share the mic. Okay, so let's get started with the oath. I, Jamie Carrillo.
I, Jamie Carrillo.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
To the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations, you are a new certificated.
Congratulations. Thank you, congratulations.
Give her a pin right away. She's a little pin.
We've also made sure she got a copy of Larkspur past and present.
Just don't charge her for it. Okay, well, that was, that was good. So, let's move on to agenda item number four, which is approval of the consent calendar.
Public comment.
Oh, do we? I'm sorry, I'm skipping ahead. So, public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address items that are not on the agenda otherwise. If you have something you wish to contribute at this point, please approach the podium, state your name and city, which is optional. Individuals have three minutes to speak, five minutes if representing a group. And we'll get started with that. Cindy, go ahead.
I'm commenting about the Tamalpais Union High School District's bond issue on behalf of cyclists and pedestrians. I've been wondering how the proposed Redwood High School improvements will affect local traffic. Today, I fortuitously happened to meet up with David O'Connor, the TUSHD maintenance supervisor. He said that while the district has not yet determined what improvements the bond issue will fund, there will be more school traffic in any event. They expect significantly increased enrollment, peaking in 2021, after which numbers will probably remain at that level. I said I was concerned about the Lucky-Doherty connection near the entrance to the east parking lot, that the corner presents some difficult bike pad issues, that local advocates and DPWs have been studying forever, at least 10 years, I'd say. David is aware of the corner's challenges, having discussed them with Julian. I told David that Corder Madera's jurisdictional line is only about 140 feet from the east parking lot entrance, and that I had reached out to the town last night at the town council meeting. He seemed appreciative. Last night, I urged the town, if they have not already, to advise TUSHD that the town is a stakeholder. I provided a map showing the jurisdictional boundary. Copy attached here, too. In addition to the corner, Lucky Drive presents major bike pad issues from the jurisdictional line and extending through the Pfeiffer intersection. It would seem appropriate to resolve this section of roadway at the same time. As I said last night, both twin cities are involved here. End of comment. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Cindy. Is anyone else from the public who would like to speak on a matter not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment portion of this evening's meeting and move now to agenda item number four, which is approval of the consent calendar. Are there any members of the city council that would like to pull any item from the consent calendar? Seeing none, is there anyone from the public who would like to have one taken out? Seeing none there, I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll move this consent calendar.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. And with that, moving to agenda item number five, the city manager's oral report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Since we've last convened the council meeting, we had our July 4th celebration, and I just want to again acknowledge the hard work of Public Works to help make sure things are set up logistically and take things down, and also to acknowledge the participation of our public safety personnel. I think they really add some of that great color and flavor to the beginning of the parade. And I've made no secret that one of my favorite parts of the parade is when the engines switch places at the, at the city limit line, so I always appreciate the fire guys doing that. It's that little maneuver they have to be careful while they're doing, because there's always children running around. But, good feedback this year, and at least no complaints at my desk, so that's always a sign that the parade went really well. So, very pleased and thank all the staff who helped to make that happen, and a thank you to the Chamber of Commerce and Corder Madera, which does the heavy lifting of organizing the parade. Want to also let the council know, probably if you've visited City Hall and you've noticed there's still a lot of finishes here and there that need to be taken care of, we are working on that now that we have a full crew. Been talking with the Public Works Director, and we're going to bang those out. I know periodically we get some questions about that. Excited to finish that up and be done with, with the City Hall remodel, for the time being, anyway. It seems like this building's always a little bit in need of touch. And then, on a, on a policy level, a couple of things to make the council and the public aware. First Monday, this coming Monday, which is the 24th, there'll be a meeting of the steering committee for the fire consolidation with Corder Madera. And so, folks, I encourage folks, I think it's 6:30 at the Corder Madera.
No, it's here.
Oh, it's here, thank you. See, I, council members know better than me. Sorry, but, yes, it's here in this council chamber, 6:30 on Monday. Should be an interesting meeting. We'll be actually focusing on the JPA itself, and the document, and the language that will bring the agency into effect. So, for folks that are interested, that's a good meeting to attend. And then, I also wanted to acknowledge that Julian Skinner, in particular, Public Works Director, myself, when I can, we continue to do meetings with neighborhoods and various individuals about our pavement program and Measure C. And particularly, I want to note that on a couple of times, Julian's done this himself and is going to do another one where I've got a conflict, so very appreciative of him doing that. After this goes on the ballot, we will probably switch more as a staff to providing written information and be less out in the public, because, provided you do approve it this evening, our role changes. We've become purely informational and have to be careful about how we participate in the dialogue as a staff after that. So, but we are still available, and I think we have one neighborhood meeting coming up this Monday, and if anybody else still wants to talk to us, we're still ready and able, so please reach out to us. And then, our paving for this year has, has not started with pavement being rolled out, but our contractors are out in the field getting things ready, so folks can expect to see pavement activity, and we encourage you to go to the fixing our roads section of the website for the city to see what the schedule is in terms of which roads are being touched this year. With that, I'm going to turn it back to the council.
Okay, great. Thanks, thanks very much. Any questions, the city manager?
Not a question, but, you know, you mentioned the fire trucks. There was a Central Marin Fire Truck.
So, I think I mentioned the council once before. We were waiting, and with bated breath, for the steering committee to let us know if they were comfortable with the name Central Marin Fire, which is the name that the staff has. The members of the two fire departments have strongly suggested, and the steering committee nodded in the affirmative, and they brought it back to you for that conversation. So, we were waiting with bated breath, because it's not cheap to paint the name on a fire truck, so we got it painted with the, that name. That's actually Corder Madera's truck. Our truck's coming soon, the first one that we will have ordered that says Central Marin Fire on it. Do you know when that's coming, so?
About a month away.
Okay, about a month away, so about a month from now, there'll be two trucks that say Central Marin Fire on them, and eventually, we'll map out a plan to paint that on the other trucks, so.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just to follow up on that, the meeting is on Monday, and I know at our last ad hoc meeting, we talked about making sure the itinerary, the agenda was going to be online.
Yep, the clerk for Corder Madera sent it to our staff about two hours ago.
Yeah, I got.
So, I'm not sure if it's online yet.
Okay.
But it will be.
I got the email from Rebecca, too, about a half an hour ago, so just want to make sure that we can get those meetings online, too.
Yep.
Great, thank you.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Seeing none, let's move on to agenda item number six, which are council members' oral reports and comments. Maybe we can start over here.
Do you want to talk about the wine stroll?
Council member Morrison, go ahead, please.
Sure. I just want to talk about the wine stroll that happened on last Saturday. I know that we had Dan Hillmer and Catherine Way attended also. It was completely, they ordered 500 wine glasses, more than 500 people showed up, so that was quite exciting for all of us. Lot of the members of, the business members were a part take in the event, which was wonderful, so the businesses appreciated all the individuals coming into their businesses. That was great. Let's see, so we're going to need again a debrief, but it was a huge success, the best turnout ever, so we look forward to continue this event for the following year and only improve the system. Do you have anything you want to add? Everybody at Cooney was quite jolly, and everyone was excited to be part of Larkspur, and Larkspur looks just fantastic. So, it was, it was a pleasant evening and quite warm. Do you want to say anything?
Good time was had by all.
Well, I'm sorry I wasn't able to attend, but I understand it was a great event, so we'll just keep building on that momentum in the future. It's terrific. Anything else? I just want to kind of echo the comments about the parade, since I did have the opportunity this year to participate in it, and it was, it was great fun. It was very well organized, and I want to share your comments, Dan, about the great work of our public safety officials and the presence that they showed, and it was just a terrific event. I will make one, one comment apropos of the rest of the agenda tonight. There were crowds all along the parade route, but there were some big crowds over in Corder Madera from both residents of Larkspur and, and Corder Madera. And for those of you who were out at the parade, you've noticed that the streets have been paved there recently, and are in quite good shape. So, I got a number of shout-outs from the crowd, saying, "When are you going to do that in Larkspur?" And I responded, "We are, we are decidedly working on it," which, which we are. But it was, it was a great, it was a great event, and I was very happy to be, be a part of it. So, with that, let's move on to our next agenda item, number seven, which are public hearings, and agenda item number 7.1, placement of the renewal of the Larkspur Street Repair and Essential Services Measure C on the November 7th, 2017 ballot. And if we could have a staff report for that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm going to do my staff report utilizing PowerPoint. This is a big day, and this is a, something we've been building toward for four years, really, since we had the passage of Measure C, our current street repair and essential services measure. We've had several discussions with the council in the last few months about our street repair program. For members of the public who haven't had the benefit, really encourage folks to go online and watch the meeting where we did the presentation of our program and the challenges we still face. Julian Skinner did an excellent job, and that was, I think, was it the June, which date was that? June, first meeting or second? Julian's presentation. Yeah, we're all blanking. I'll get you the day. I want to say it's the first meeting in, in June, so June.
June 3rd?
June 7th.
7th.
Yeah, so folks should go on and look at the June 7th presentation, strongly encourage that. Today, we're going to talk about what staff is recommending beyond the ballot this year, as we talk about moving forward and how we can take the program we've developed, accelerate it, and touch all the streets in Larkspur over the next five years, and achieve some of the other service desires of the community. The reason we need to look at renewal this year, first, the measure we have now passed in November of 2013, and it went into effect on April 1st of 2014. It had a five-year sunset, so it expires on April 1st of 2019. The renewal needs to be on the ballot when there's a city council election, and November of 2017 is the last city council election before the measure expires. That's why this is before you now. Measure C's been a great benefit to the community. Voter-approved local funding has made a difference. We've worked hard as a staff, we've worked hard in conjunction with the Citizens Oversight Committee, we've worked hard with you as a council to recognize the needs of the community and to address them with the measure that we have now. And we can talk about what we've done. We've fixed roads. I want to say again, we fixed roads. If I haven't said enough, we fixed roads. And I'm going to say it one more time, we fixed a lot of roads. We're really proud that we've been able to get out and do that. We know that's what the community wants. I like this one here. Admittedly, that's the same street from the other end, but that's an example of one we fixed. That's Dartmouth, I think, in the Hillview neighborhood. But despite fixing all those roads, we are still the lowest rated road system of any municipality in the Bay Area. And it's not close. We're, we're the last one by a pretty significant margin, and we're rated as a poor-conditioned road network. So, we need to find a way to accelerate the program and solve that problem. Those aren't the only things we've, we've done. In the discussion four years ago, there was a lot of interest in vegetation management, particularly with respect to canopies over streets that were preventing the passage of larger vehicles, such as emergency response vehicles and garbage trucks, and so we have a program in place, and some of the money that's been generated by the measure funds that program. The other thing we've done is we've committed to a lease on a fire truck. There is the Corder Madera one, because I don't yet have a picture of our truck to show you, but it is coming. And though it won't be exactly that style of truck, it'll be painted very similarly, so I thought I'd give you a preview of roughly what our fire truck's going to look like. You lease the truck, and then they build it for you, so it's on its way. The community wants more. We've done a community survey, and Mr. Skinner and I have been out doing a lot of outreach meetings. Several of the council members have been at different meetings with us, and we've heard loud and clear, the community wants more done. And what they most want is road repair. And the thing we get asked the most is, "When is my road going to get fixed?" And that's a difficult conversation in the methodology we've been applying to date, and I'll talk about that more in a second. But we want to end this type of road condition in Larkspur. We don't want to see what they call alligator cracks and potholes on our streets anymore. And that's not the only thing we want to do. We heard from the community that there's concern about emergency response, but we also heard there's concern about storm drains. And so, we want to make sure that whatever we do going forward, if there's capacity once the roads are done, we address these other needs as well. So, as I said, we hear loud and clear, the community wants their roads fixed, and everyone really wants to know when their road, what they view as their road is going to be fixed. We've learned after launching the program with the current measure that the pay-as-you-go system will work for a road maintenance program, but it is not a way to do a comprehensive repair of the entire system, particularly a system that's in the condition of Larkspur's system. We cannot get Larkspur out of the poor-conditioned quality unless we make a major investment and do all of the roads together in a short timeline of something like five years. We've also learned, and we've spoken to you about this a few times recently, that under our current program, our maintenance costs are actually double what they would be if we make that investment and we fix all our roads. Our maintenance costs are on the magnitude of 1.8 million to keep us as a poor road network. If we get up to being a good-quality road network under the measurement system, we actually cut that price tag in half. That is serious money, and we need to make that investment, not just because people want their roads fixed, but it is the right thing to do financially. The other thing we know now, having worked under the pay-as-you-go system, is that we will stay in the 40s. The poor condition of the system that's used to measure it, the pavement condition index system, we will be measured in the 40s for the foreseeable future if we stick to pay-as-you-go. And we've shown you the modeling behind that, and frankly, what we've experienced bears it out. We've invested in our roads now using the pay-as-you-go approach from the last measure for three cycles, and we've gone from being around 39 or 40 to 41 or 42. And we probably are about as much an improvement as we're going to make anytime soon, just doing that. We also know that we won't touch every road if we stick with the pay-as-you-go system. And we know that because we've talked to you about the way roads deteriorate, and the fact that we need to prevent the ones that are in good condition from becoming poor and bad-conditioned roads. And so, to keep those roads from cycling into bad condition, we're never going to get to some of the roads. And so, that, we can't make that commitment we want to make to the community to pave every road. That's why we need to do an accelerated program. We'll talk a little bit more about that shortly. We also heard in our surveys and some of our outreach that the community wants to preserve emergency response services, and they want to improve storm drains. What you're going to, what you've seen in your materials that we're proposing, that the sales tax rate in Larkspur matched the rate that's in San Rafael and Fairfax, and that in doing so, we will have the capacity to prioritize our road repair and address these other interests, these other needs and desires of the community. And so, we, that is one of the elements of what's before you, is to put our sales tax level at the same level as San Rafael and Fairfax. So, the measure. This is the ballot language. It's in the report that you have, it's in the resolution that's before you tonight. I'm going to read it so that everybody hears what it is. I want to make sure that, and that the public knows, I want to remind the council that when we did our survey, we actually talked to people through the survey about this language, and people responded favorably to this language. And this is what we've been developing and working with since that conversation. So, "To maintain city services, including fire protection, 911 emergency medical response, repairing aging, deteriorating neighborhood streets, roads, potholes, major boulevards, clearing brush to prevent fires, improve emergency vehicle access, upgrading storm drains, and other services, shall the city of Larkspur extend the voter-approved sales tax at the 3/4 cent rate until ended by voters, providing approximately 1.6 million 650,000 annually, with authority to incur debt to accelerate infrastructure projects subject to citizens oversight and audits." And there's a lot there. I want to remind the council that crafting ballot language is challenging. You have a 75-word limit. This is an area of expertise for your city attorney, Sky Woodruff. He actually does that for a number of entities. This isn't the only thing the community gets, and our conversation with you's been broader than the language that's up here. So, I want to remind the council that Mr. Woodruff is responsible for giving the community an impartial analysis of the meaning of this language, and then there is the opportunity to provide argument in favor of the measure, which will be your opportunity to emphasize some of the policy issues that we've brought to you today. If you adopt a policy saying what you want to do with this money, that ballot argument will be your opportunity to share that and emphasize that with the voters. So, I know sometimes it's, it's, you want more in the actual ballot, but it really is challenging to meet your legal requirements in the 75-word constraints. But we did vet this language, and we feel very comfortable that this captures everything that we've discussed with you and with the community. Well, I want to emphasize, too, about this language and this approach, is that it's about choice, and it's about empowering the council and the voters with choice. The proposed measure that we've drafted and are presenting to you, the language we're proposing for the measure on the ballot, the ordinance that's before you that would codify how this measure works, is designed in a way that will allow us to accelerate our road program and address all the roads in five years. And I want to really emphasize that. This approach, we feel confident empowers the city council to respond to that desire that every street in Larkspur gets touched. It also gives the council and staff the ability to study what the financing options are to meet that goal and determine what is the most fiscally sound choice for the community. I get a lot of folks from time to time who ask me questions about how the city finances capital projects. It's not a simple answer, because there's different financing vehicles, and there's different timelines, and there's different costs depending on what we're doing. This approach, this measure, is designed in a way so that we can take, if it passes, we can take the months following to look out into the financing world and figure out what's the best solution for Larkspur, what's the right timeline for that financing, to make sure that we present to the community the best return on the investment that they're making by trusting us with this sales capital projects. It's not a simple answer, because there's different financing vehicles, and there's different timelines, and there's different costs depending on what we're doing. This approach, this measure, is designed in a way so that we can take, if it passes, we can take the months following to look out into the financing world and figure out what's the best solution for Larkspur, what's the right timeline for that financing, to make sure that we present to the community the best return on the investment that they're making by trusting us with this sales tax. The other thing is it empowers the voters with choice. The way this is designed, the voters will have the ability to end the tax. When they feel it's no longer needed, it's fulfilled the needs of the community, the voters can terminate the tax. Additionally, the Citizens Oversight Committee can be empowered to be the watchdog of that question, and every year asked, is this the year we recommend to the council that the tax has fulfilled its need? So it doesn't get lost. It's always on the minds of the people even powered. Folks ask me what the Citizens Oversight Committee does. Among the things they do for you is they vet staff's recommendations on how to spend the money. It's an advisory role, but I want to remind the community and the council, the Citizens Oversight Committee takes that role very seriously. And already, in just the four years I've been working with them, there is one year that they did bring you a recommendation to not follow staff, but to do something else. And they felt very strongly about that, and they showed their commitment to the seriousness of their role. And I have every confidence they would continue, and whoever gets appointed in the future, that committee would continue in that important role for the voters and the taxpayers. So, in your packet, you have three actions that we're asking you to take. Once passed a resolution that puts this on the ballot, the others to adopt an ordinance which codifies in our municipal code the measure and then the use of the money in a broad, in the broad sense of the legal context of the code. The third document, in some respects, may be the most important, even though it's a policy statement, but it's your policy statement of how you want this money spent. And how, and it's your guideline for yourself, it's your guideline for the community, it's your guideline for the Oversight Committee of how you want to have the money spelt. And it says very clearly that the roads are priority one, that if this measure passes, we're going to do a plan and implement our program to get every road touched and get our system up to a good-quality network. It also recognizes that emergency services and storm drains are a priority for the community, and they will get attention as money is available. The other thing I think it's done that's helpful, want to really acknowledge the work that Public Works Director Julian Skinner did, is he noticed that, over the time he's been here, there's a lot of questions about road repair and what it is. So we've tried to really help the community understand that in this policy, too, and really define the full context of what a road repair may or may not be. And I think that'll be helpful as we go forward. So we had three recommended actions for you tonight. One is to adopt Resolution 5617. That's the resolution that we call for the election. The other thing is to introduce and waive the first reading of the ordinance, which provides all the details of the measure. And then lastly, adopt Resolution 5717, which would establish the policy that'll serve as the guideline about the use of the revenue from the measure. These should all be done as separate votes when you're prepared to do that. And at this point, Mr. Mayor, I'm done with my presentation, and the staff's available for questions.
Just one quick clarification on the last point of procedurally. So the request would be to separately adopt Resolution 5617 and then introduce and waive first reading of the ordinance.
Take them as separate actions.
Two separate actions, so we actually have three separate votes.
That's correct. And then, just for procedural clarification, we have a special meeting scheduled a week from today, and the purpose of that meeting would be to do the second reading of the ordinance, should you adopt it, because we need to do that in a timely manner to get it into, into the county for the election, because the deadline is in early August.
Okay. And that second meeting has been duly noticed to the public?
Yeah.
It's on our calendar.
Sorry?
Just technically, it'll be an adjourned regular meeting.
Oh, thank you. Sorry.
So at the end of the meeting tonight, we'll ask you to adjourn to that meeting, just to, to meet government code requirements for the technicalities of, types of meetings at which ordinances can be adopted.
Okay. And you'll remind us of that, the conclusion of the meeting tonight?
I will endeavor to do so.
That's, that's why he's here, to keep me from saying the wrong thing.
We see it for other reasons as well, but that's a good one.
So with that, we're available for any questions.
Okay. Does, do any members of the city council have questions for the city manager on this?
I have a question.
Please.
Just some clarifications for me about the timeline. So we, this would become effective, it's probably in here, and I probably just missed it, April 1st, 2019? Or when does the change become effective? I just want to make sure it's clear to people.
Yeah, so it, so it will be, so the current measure will expire March 31st, 2018.
Yeah.
2019.
2019, the new.
So the way it's written, it's the next day.
It's the next day.
Yeah.
Okay. So we wouldn't be seeing funds?
We'd still see the funds from the first cycle.
For the next year.
For, for the one more year.
Okay. The second is about the Oversight Committee. In the attachment to, every, by March 31st of every year, the five-member Oversight Committee can review an auditor's report and make recommendations. But I don't see anywhere in here, and perhaps I missed it, of how, the term of the Oversight Committee. And I know we appoint them, but is there a term to that? Would we?
I think when you adopted your resolution for the Oversight Committee, you said that after the five years had completed, you would revisit the composition of the committee.
Okay.
So probably at that time, you might want to establish what the terms are going forward.
Okay. Because I, I didn't see that, because.
You adopted a separate resolution after the Measure C passed, and my recollection is that's what it contemplated, was that you'd visit this question again after five years.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That's all I had for now.
Okay. Any other questions from the council?
Truly just, I want to emphasize a couple of things. Dan, I just want to emphasize that you said that every, if Measure C passes, every street in Larkspur will be touched in five years. I think that's really important.
That's right. You know, the caveat, as always, with our pavement program is we want to deliver the biggest bang for the buck to the residents, to the taxpayers. And so we coordinate with the utilities. So if one of the utilities said to us, five years from now, we really want to put in a big pipe, you know, we would pave the road when they were done. So that would be the, that'd be the only type of thing that would change the timeline at all. And that's a good thing for the community, because the street only gets dug up once if that happens.
Right. That's right. And then also, in the ordinance, along with the Resolution 5717, I also want to emphasize the wording, "Not less than 80% of revenue generated by the Larkspur Street Repair and Essential Service Measure shall be directed towards road repair, rehabilitation, and maintenance." And it goes on and on and on. And then it says, "The remaining 20% may also be directed towards road repair, rehabilitation, and maintenance." So I just want to make sure that that's emphasized, that 80% is going to go towards the road, 20% will go maybe towards the storm drains and other essential needs. If not, it will continue going towards the roads. Is that correct?
That's one way to interpret it, but you have three years of evidence, and the lowest amount you've spent on the roads in three years is 92% of revenue.
Exactly.
So I think we've demonstrated that we're fully committed to, to investing in the roads and getting this job done. And so I think it's actually likely, in the early years, we'd still be spending at that margin.
Great. Good to hear. Thank you.
Councilmember Hiller, do you have any questions?
Nothing at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Well, with that, we'll bring it back to the council for further discussion, but we can open it up to the public at this point. So if any members of the public have comments that what they would like to offer on this agenda item, please approach the podium, state your name, and where you live. James, go ahead.
Before the public's.
Yes.
Mr. Wood is reminding me, we actually crafted the ordinance to supersede the Measure C and go into effect in 2018. So the new rate actually does come in in 2018, so.
Thank you for that.
With the idea that, with the idea that we'd be able to, to, if there was, the council decided to proceed with accelerating projects with financing, that you'd be able to do that next year and have the guarantee about the, the, the measure being in effect for that period of time?
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. And we'll move on. Mr. Holmes, we'll keep public comments to, to three minutes, so take it away.
James Holmes, Larkspur. I'm the spokesperson for the Measure C Committee, but the Measure C Committee has not actually looked at this particular measure. We have looked in concept at a lot of the, the aspects of it, and I can tell you what they are if you would like. But the three detailed points that I'm going to address were not looked at by the committee because they weren't available then, so I'm speaking for myself as to those. First point, I have a bit of apprehension about having an unlimited time. I know that in the past, the assumption has been that it would be of a longer time period and a period sufficient to enable the, to enable a bonding, if possible. But as the staff report indicates, there has been, we've been able to fix four, 1/4 of the roads in four years, and by that, continuing that, we'd be able to fix them all in, in 12 years. So I have a certain, now, as I say, the committee discussed, in theory, 20-year, a 20-year, 20, a 20-year tax, but as I say, that, that was not a firm commitment. But in any event, I just, it's hard for me to defend an unlimited tax, given the time period within which we could, we could repair our roads. So while I think something longer than 12 years perhaps makes sense, based on perhaps funding strategies and other considerations, I wonder whether it has to be perpetual. The next issues are, are quite technical. Regarding the ballot language, I am concerned for two reasons. First of all, because unlike the prior ballot language, which I'm going to give you, it doesn't start with "to repair aging, deteriorated roads." It starts with "fire protection and 911 emergency services." So the emphasis is very different. Secondly, it uses the term in the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5th line, "extend the voter-approved sales tax at the 3/4s rate." That suggests that it may already be at the 3/4s rate, and it's just being extended. I will just give you coffee, so this is the former language, and you'll see it started, yes, but you'll see it started very explicitly with a reference to road repair. And I get concerned when I see us moving away from that. So to that extent, I'm concerned with the ballot language. And I think that's the, actually, the second point that I had. I have another point relating to the proposed policy. The proposed policy is actually a separate agenda item. So I could address that here separately, or I could address it with a separate agenda item, however you wish. But in any event, I'm, I'm apprehensive about the, those two aspects of the ballot language and the possibility of an unlimited time period for the tax.
Yeah. No. James, if you have some additional comments, we'll give you a little more time if you want to take care of the, the second resolution.
Do you want to, do you want to discuss the, the policy as well?
Yeah, I think we, I think it'll be more efficient if we just cover all our comments at this point.
My concerns with the policy is that I think it is much broader and less specific than the council's old policy. The council's old policy was very clear and specific, and it just said, 80%, it shall be the policy of the Larkspur City Council, that not less than 80% shall be directed, will be directed to, toward road improvements. This has a very, very much longer list of things that go in to the 80%. And that concerns me, particularly because there have been different views between the staff and the committee as to what should be within the 80%. So I, when I see it so much broader, I begin to get concerned with where the, with whether we'll continue to have 80% really going to pavement or with going to a lot of other things. My other concern has to do with ambiguity, because it doesn't indicate whether the storm drains go into the 80% or the 20%. So I think this should be clarified, and if the storm drains go into the, the 80%, then I have some concern, because I think it's very possible that, that 80% of, 80% of 3/4% tax may yield less for actual pavement than the current 90% of 1/2% tax. So I'm wondering if both because of the greater breadth of the language in, for the 80% and the inclusion of the storm drains, we'll actually have less money going into the storm drain, I'm sorry, going in for actual pavement than there was before. I'd also mention that in the sixth whereas, there's a reference to a plan. If you look at the sixth whereas of your policy, there's a reference to a plan, but I don't think there is a plan in force, and I'm not sure what that means. And I'm, it's attachment to, to your staff report, the six, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, says, no, I'm sorry, it's not the, it's not the, it's not the sixth. But there is a, there is a reference to a plan in attachment to, and there is no plan that I think has been developed. Unfortunately, I'm just not finding it right here.
Yeah, I think it is the sixth whereas.
It is the sixth whereas, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. Thank, I must be looking at the wrong, I must be looking at the wrong attachment. But there is, thank you for catching that. There is a reference to a plan, and I'm not sure that there is a plan yet in force or that there necessarily will be by the time of the actual election.
Okay. All right. Thanks. Anything else, James?
I think, I think that's just about it. Thank you.
Okay. Just before we open it up more, can just comment on the, the reference to the plan and what, what we have in mind.
Would you like me to comment on all the?
If you want to take an opportunity, please.
So with respect to establishing a term versus empowering the voters to make the choice, we don't know how long it's going to take to fix all the roads. I know that Mr. Holmes has presented a linear interpretation, and that, as you know from several presentations, is not, in fact, how this will work. It's not that we did 25% of the roads in, in three years, and therefore, the whole system can be done in four years. And that's because increasingly, the money will have to be directed into maintaining the roads we have already done. And so the percentage of road we can accomplish each year is going to go down and down and down, until we're not touching new roads. We're putting all the money into maintaining the handful of roads we fixed. So we never hit 100% of the roads done if we approach this in a linear fashion. But we don't know exactly how long this may take to complete and pay off whatever the financing is. So how much better to empower the voters to make the decision annually of evaluating whether it should be on the ballot and, and removed, rather than establishing a term that may or may not be sufficient or appropriate to accomplish the goal that the community wants. And I think it's so critical to emphasize that the Oversight Committee would then serve the role each year of looking at whether or not the tax is needed to continue. The term, the, the way the ballot language is structured is the way it's been structured actually in the last, in four of the most recent sales tax elections. The language that Mr. Wood has put together for the ballot was used, similar language was used in Nevada, Cattati, San Leandro, and I had a fourth one here, El Cerrito. And so we've modeled this after the type of ballot language that's become the language that's accepted and put forward on the ballot. Again, any question of what's happening is clarified in the impartial analysis and in any of the additional ballot material. So I think to rely solely on just the statement on the ballot, it would, on most measures, make it challenging, and it's important to look at the, the analysis for the full detail. And then lastly, I disagree with Mr. Holmes about the policy. I, I think the old policy is less clear, and that road improvements, one of the consternations of many members of the public and members of the Oversight Committee that's been expressed to me is that road improvements is too broad, and doesn't, no one's quite sure what is a road improvement. And so we've attempted to, to provide you a list of all the things that by law are actually part of improving a road. And we've talked with you many times that, as difficult as it can be for folks to, to fully understand, and we don't write these laws, you have to fix the curb ramps, you have to upgrade. have to upgrade sidewalks often, to legally fix a road. You can't touch the road unless you're doing those repairs as well. So the law treats those as road improvements, and we don't want the public to have any misunderstanding that that's part of the legal requirement to get this work done. So we, we feel enumerating all these things, listing these things out, is actually providing greater clarity, not less clarity. And then lastly, I do think we could change the whereas clause to say the city will develop a plan, if that gives the council more comfort. I think we have the outline of a plan, so I was, I'm comfortable with has developed, but if it's interpreted that a plan is a very specific adopted document, we don't have that, so we could say will develop if that.
That might be a good productive thing to do.
So that would be an easy edit we can make tonight at the dais.
Okay. And, and just to follow up on that, I, I looked at Resolution 5717 and the language in there, and specifically with respect to the comment about storm drains, they are treated, the storm, the storm drain issue is treated separately from the roads, and it's maybe even worth just looking exactly at the language that's being proposed here, because they, there is a distinction that's being made.
Well, I do think it's also important, this policy, and once we've done all the roads, and we're, a big part of the measure's revenue then is paying off the cost of having accelerated the program, what these percentages need to be might be something we have to revisit, because we may want to shift monies around, because we will have accomplished the primary goal. So this is not a policy that lives on a shelf and is forgotten, it's something that lives and breathes and gets revisited on a regular basis.
Yeah, I think that, that's an important point, and I think it's also important to, to note the very productive role that the Oversight Committee has played with the initial round of implementation of Measure C, and we would expect them to be diligent.
They push me hard every year.
Diligent in the future as this moves, moves forward as well. Any other pub, I'm sorry, Councilmember Hiller.
Just with respect to the sixth whereas in the, in the Resolution 57 slash seventeen, I, I would, I would like to support the, the con, the idea expressed in that whereas paragraph. And I think it's important that we emphasize that the city has developed, whether we use the word plan or strategy, but we have developed a plan to accelerate the road repair and maintenance program to touch every road in Larksboro over a period of five years. We have, that, that idea has been developed. That's what's leading to us putting forward this accelerated mechan, funding mechanism. So I, I think tenths of that sentence should be supported, whether we use the word plan or some other word.
Maybe the word strategy might give the council more comfort, I think.
I think that's, the, the word plan has a kind of a connotation that there's some document that's out there, and I think there are a lot of concepts and documents and all kinds of things that constitute the planning effort.
Again, I do think we've outlined it pretty clearly, what we would do and how we would do it, and that definitely is captured by the word strategy.
I think the concept has merit.
Absolutely. Councilmember Chu?
Yeah, just to, one, clarify one point. If you do the simple math on the ninety percent of half a percent versus eighty percent of three-quarters, the new proposal will generate a third more in revenue, assuming it's being applied to the same basis. Okay, so take that argument off the table, it's just simple math. Okay, the second thing, though, I thought was a good point raised by Mr. Holmes. It's in the ballot language, and he did point out, you know, the differences between last time and this time, and we really wanted to be very clear that the, in this case, at least eighty percent is going to go towards road repair, so wouldn't we want to highlight that in the ballot language first?
So a couple of points there. One is, we did not have that in the ballot language four years ago, that eighty percent would be spent on the road. You adopted a policy then. You can't do that, because you can't constrain future councils on how they're going to actually spend the money. You can adopt a policy and make a very public commitment, but you can't legally bind them without changing the nature of this ballot measure, which we can't do, so.
Yeah, but the ballot language starts out and talks about road repair, as opposed to starting out and talking about maintaining city services and fire protection.
I think if you want to shift the order of the services without changing the number count of the words, we could probably do that.
We can't, I just, I, I would remind you of one point that Dan raised in, in his staff report, which is that the version of the question that's in front of you is the one that was included in the survey that went out to the voters, that, that respondents said that they supported, and that has, had been vetted by the council before, which does not preclude you from changing it. But the list of potential uses, in my experience, is there to be illustrative to, to voters of what the priorities are for the use of the revenue. It's not a rank priority by, just because of the order that they're in, and I don't usually take voters to read it that way. So you can certainly reorder things as long as the, the word count doesn't change, but I would just, again, remind the council that this is the version that, that participants in the poll have already seen, that members of the public, that Dan and Julian have spoken to have seen, and that they've all responded to very positively.
Well, that's based on the survey response, but if you just take our general voting public, who's going to scan this very quickly, you know, their first impression is going to be what they read in the first several lines. And if we place our biggest emphasis and the greatest need on road repairs, that, I would want to lead with that. You know, I don't know what the rest of the council feels about that.
No, I, I met with, with Dan before this, before this afternoon, mentioned the same concern, that I think what the repairing, aging, deteriorating, the roads need to be mentioned first. So I, I also brought that to Dan's attention, that was my concern.
Okay, well, we're, we're still in the public comment period. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to make a comment on this, before we bring it formally back to the council?
Yes.
Seeing none, then let's actually formally bring it back to the council, and are there any comments, further comments, that members of the council would like to make, or proposals regarding the language? I just have one question on this last, this last point about the ordering of the items in the ballot language. I think you mentioned that, that this language was very similar to language that was floated by some of the other communities that have taken this. Is that true with respect to the ordering of the priorities?
No, if you look at the four cities I mentioned, what they were presenting as the top priorities to their community, not all of them were as concerned about road quality and things like that. Remember, it is a general tax, and so each community is enumerating the issues that their community have expressed.
Okay, that was just a clarification.
Yeah, no, I was referring to the rest of the language is becoming the, the industry standard, so to speak.
Okay, that's fine, thank you for, thank you for that. Any further comments, questions from members of the council on this?
I'd like to continue discussing the wording.
Please.
Okay. So Dan, what I would recommend, Larry, I don't know if this is where you're going towards, is to put to maintain city services, including repairing, aging, deteriorating neighborhood streets, start with that. Is that, is that what you suggested too, Larry?
Yeah, I mean, move it up from what almost is the last item on the list to make it the first, because that's what people are voting for.
That's correct.
And that's what we're giving the highest percentage initially.
Okay, so my understanding is that the council, when it moves on this item, might want to see the words "fire protection slash 911 emergency slash medical response," and the words "repairing, aging, deteriorating neighborhood streets, roads, potholes, major boulevards," essentially transposed, so that.
I think that's the suggestion that's being made. Will that, will that create any procedural problems with moving this forward?
No, it's the same number of words, just, just reordered, and so as long as the motion to adopt the resolution includes that change to the text of the ballot question, everything should be fine.
Okay, Councilmember Hiller?
Would that wording be consistent with the spending priorities as listed elsewhere in the information?
Yes.
So if we change that, if we, as we've discussed changing the order of those items, would that mean that this has to come back to us on?
No, you can do that at the dais tonight.
Oh, you can, okay. So.
So it would just simply be a, a motion reflecting those, those changes?
The, the wording of the ballot question is set in the resolution that calls the question, that, sorry, that places the measure onto the ballot.
Correct, right.
It only requires a single action, and I think it's an easy change for the maker of the motion to identify as a change to the text of the, of the resolution, so that when the council adopts the resolution, that will be fixed in the final version.
Okay, well, with that, and then you have further questions?
One more question about the language, are we, I didn't count, but are we at seventy-five words exactly on this?
If I remember correctly, we're either exactly at seventy-five or at seventy-four.
Okay. I was just wondering if, if citizens oversight, if there could be a mention that it meets yearly.
That'd put you over.
That'd put you over?
That would definitely.
Or just say yearly, citizens oversight?
They actually meet about four times, three to four times a year.
Oh, well, there you go. Okay, that'll put us over then.
I think that type of information is better suited to the other components of the ballot material.
Yes, got it.
Okay, any other further comments or questions from the council? Seeing none, I guess we'd like to entertain a motion, and I think the sense of the council is to move for passage of Resolution 5617 with the changes in the ordering of the language that we've discussed here so far.
I'll move to adopt Resolution 5617 as amended.
And I'll second it.
So let's call for a vote, all in favor, please?
So just to clarify, the amended part is to move?
We're going to take the words from "fire protection, 911 emergency response, medical response," as one group. The next group is "repairing, aging, deteriorating neighborhood streets, roads, potholes, major boulevards." We're going to switch those, so that the language about the roads is first, and the language about fire protection is second.
Okay.
And that's consistent with yours?
Yes.
So we have a motion with that amendment, and we have a second, I think? So call a question, all those in favor of adopting Resolution 5617 with that modification, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is passed. So with that, I think we're going to follow the order of things, and have a request for a second motion to waive the first reading beyond the title and introduce ordinance number 1019 slash 17, extending the existing voter-approved local city of Larksboro sales tax at the three-quarter cent rate for the continued maintenance of city services such as street, road, and pothole repair. Is that where, where we are? So with that, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion passes. And I think that can take us to the third item, which is a motion to adopt Resolution 5717, which establishes a policy about how the revenue from the proposed Measure C would be spent.
And my understanding is the consensus, the council, is that the, in the sixth whereas, the word plan would be replaced with strategy.
Yes, I think that is, that is correct. So with that modification to the whereas, do I have a motion for adoption?
I'll make that motion.
So we have a motion on the floor?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion passes.
Thanks for getting us to this point.
Okay, so we will, we will move on to item number seven point two. This is an appeal of zoning administrator approval of application FHE 17 dash 22 for 53 Murray Avenue. Philip Harris, the appellant, Matt and Elizabeth Gandy, the applicant property owner, and if we could hear a staff report on this item.
Is he here? Is he there?
I don't know.
Good evening, Mayor Harof and city council members. My name is Nicholas Armour, and I am the assistant planner here at the city of Larksboro, and I'm the project planner for the current application. The matter before you tonight is an appeal of a zoning administrator approval of a fence site exception that retroactively approved a fence built in the city right-of-way to, that exceeded the forty-two inch height limit. The property at 53 Murray contains an existing two-story, single-family residence. The property has a frontage on Murray Avenue, located adjacent to a T-shaped intersection of Murray Avenue and Arbor Street. 53 Murray was granted a fence site exception in 1997 to allow a construction of a four-foot, nine-inch-tall wood fence that encroached into an unimproved section of Murray Avenue right-of-way. In late March of this year, staff received a complaint regarding a fence that had recently been constructed at 53 Murray. After investigation of the complaint, staff made contact with the property owners, informed them of the need to apply for fence site exception. An application was received on April 6th of 2017 requesting post facto approval of the fence that exceeded height limits. The previously existing four-foot, nine-inch fence has, was removed in its entirety and replaced with a taller, solid wood fence in the same location. The current design includes a sixty-inch section of solid wood fence that matches the design of the shared fence at 51 Murray to the east, installation of a seventy-two-inch, six-foot-high wood fence set back approximately four feet from the Murray Avenue road edge. Additionally, an installation of an entry gate in Arbor, adjacent to the 53 Murray driveway, reaching approximately eight feet, six inches in height. All sections of the fence are painted a dark brown color. The requested fence site exception was heard at the May 19th, 2017 zoning administrator hearing. Prior to the hearing, the zoning administrator visited the site and the neighborhood, and received nine letters of support and one letter of opposition. After hearing from all interested parties, the zoning administrator considered all issues raised, and determined the project could be approved, subject to the following conditions. The applicants must plant climbing vines in front of the fence in order to blend the fence better in with the fences in the neighborhood. Additionally, an encroachment permit and license agreement are required to allow the work in the right-of-way, and to allow the fence to remain in this location. On May 30th, 2017, Mr. Philip Harris, a resident of the Murray Park neighborhood, filed for an appeal of the zoning administrator approval of the fence site exception. The primary points of the appeal include that the appellant believes that the subject fence is not in character with the neighborhood, he believes the fence was measured incorrectly. Contrary to the Public Works Director's assessment, the, the appellant believes that the built fence will create a hazard and impair sightlines. He asserts that the encroachment permit granted for the previous fence should be expired due to the removal of the fence, and that the appellant believes the zoning administrator should have required the subject property owner to build a sidewalk. Section 18.16.090 of the Larksboro Municipal Code allows fences and front yard setbacks to be a maximum of forty-two inches, but allows for applicants to apply for a fence site exception to exceed that height limit, should the findings be made. Subject to the zoning administrator's conditions of approval, staff recommends the appeal be rejected based on the following. Staff conducted numerous site visits to the Murray Park neighborhood, and viewed and measured several other fences and shrub rows along Murray Avenue and Arbor Street. The neighborhood is characterized by a variety of different-style fences and tall shrub rows, including in the immediate vicinity. At this end of Murray Avenue, as, sorry, as this end of Murray Avenue does not contain a traditional open street scene and is characterized by large stands of trees and shrub rows, the constructed fence does not significantly obstruct or reduce the openness of the street scene. With the zoning administrator condition requiring the planting of a climbing vine on the outside of the subject fence, the appearance of the fence will be softened and better fit with many of the fences and shrub rows along Murray Avenue. Due to the appeal, staff remeasured the fence and determined the height of the taller section to be seventy-two inches or six feet, with intermittent fence posts reaching a maximum of seventy-six inches. Additionally, staff measured several of the, the surrounding fence and shrub heights, and found numerous shrub rows and fences to be comparable in height, if not taller. The planning and public works department staff reviewed the fence and driveway to determine potential impacts to safety. The fence placement retains adequate sightlines to allow vehicles to exit the driveway safely. Although the appellant is concerned with the status of the prior encroachment permit, the Public Works Department required as conditions of approval, an encroachment permit and a license agreement to allow the fence to remain in the present location. Further, the Public Works Director determined the installation of a sidewalk would not be required due to the minor scope of the, the application. In conclusion, staff, staff recommends that the city council hear from the public and consider adoption of the draft resolution denying the appeal and upholding the zoning administrator's action to approve fence site exception 1722 to legalize the fence at 53 Murray, and I can take questions.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Do we have any questions from members of the council? Councilmember Chu?
Yeah, can you clarify how much of the public right-of-way is inside the fence?
I don't have that exact number, but it's, I believe it's roughly ten feet.
Okay, ten feet along the fence, or?
In, into the yard space, yes.
So it's just a ten-foot strip?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions from members of the council? Yes?
So when you re, because one of the, one of the appellant's arguments is that it was measured incorrectly, so you went and remeasured, I couldn't find any indication here where they had measured. they had measured. I guess I can ask that of, of the appellant?
I'm not quite sure about that.
Okay. So you remeasured at the regular straight face wall and then the top?
Yes.
Not called sconces, they're fence posts?
Yes.
Okay, so the maximum height was seventy-six inches at those fence posts tops?
Correct.
Okay, so I'll ask him where they measured. That's good, thank you, for now.
Okay, any other questions from the council? Councilmember Hillmer?
Prior to this retroactive application, were there ever any street fronting fences for this property proposed higher than what was there previously?
There had been that fence site exception in nineteen ninety-seven, but after that, none.
But nothing between that one and what we're looking at tonight?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a further question?
Yeah, sorry, one more. Is the applicant applying in, or is the appellant applying in behalf of themselves or representing the neighborhood?
I believe on behalf of himself.
Okay, thank you.
They're not applying for anything. They're, the appeal is on their behalf. Yes, okay. Any other questions from council? Seeing none, why don't we open it up to public comment? Are there any members of the public who would like to comment on this item?
Doesn't the shot go?
Oh, I'm sorry. We, I'm sorry, I'm jumping, jumping, jumping the gun. It is a public hearing, so we, we want to hear the appellant, so please. The appellant represented here tonight. Thank you.
So, Nicholas.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good evening.
There's two files. One's a powerpoint, one's a PDF in case some of them have powerpoints.
Gets glitchy.
These are different houses.
I don't know.
Great, and if you can click, where was this done?
This one, I think?
X that out.
Here?
Make that go away. There we go. Wait until that disappears, or X it out, either way, but hang on a moment. Okay, now try that. One more, one more, try that. I think that's it. Is that the one? No, that's not quite it, right? Yeah, sorry. That one?
What's on this, by the way?
Yeah, Mario is on this. Thank you very much. Okay. All right, so right this way?
No.
No?
Left forward.
Left forward. Right back to right. Okay. Okay. Try this. Don't doubt. Try this, ready? Okay, thank you. Thank you, council members. My name is Philip Harris, and I live at the east end of Francis Avenue. My wife has lived there since nineteen eighty-nine. I've been with her for fifteen years, and every day at about four o'clock in the evening, we walk up our dog, Francis, left on Arbor, walked on Arbor until we hit fifty-three Murray, the subject house. We take a left on Murray, we walk back down to Magnolia, left on Magnolia, left on Francis, back home, every day. So this is our neighborhood, and the owners of number fifty-three are our neighbors. So put yourself in my shoes for a moment. It's really not easy for a neighbor to come to a city council meeting and ask the council to make a neighbor remove a fence that they obviously want to keep. It creates hard feelings and ill will, and I wouldn't do this if I wasn't also speaking for other neighbors who feel the same way I do, but are concerned about publicly objecting. So I stand here as a representative for our neighborhood and as a representative for the enforcement of the city code. First, let's look at the fence that existed in nineteen ninety-seven before the owners removed it. This was the fence that was built when an encroachment permit was granted. The pre-existing fence reinforces the city's commitment to open, welcoming house frontages. It's attractive, at least according to the seventeen neighbors I spoke to. It's safe, and it allows the existing stop sign to be prominently displayed. More on that later. And by the way, it's also higher than the permitted three and a half feet. I'm going to go on the record now and say that if the proposed fence was built like this one, we wouldn't be here. So I say proposed because just as the administrator stated that she reviewed the permit as though the fence were not yet constructed, that's the same standard that this city council should employ when considering her decision. In other words, you got to consider this to be their dirt, and what I'm going to show you is the fence that the owners want to construct. Here it is. It's about a fourteen-foot fence. When you take into account these not even mature bushes the owners placed on the inside of the fence just two days after the fence height, fence height exception permit hearing. Clearly, they were intending to plant them permanently and permit them to expand in width and height until, what, they were going to create a twenty-foot solid wall? And even though the owners were instructed to remove that second fence because they hadn't sought either amendment to their existing fence height exception or a second fence height exception, it gives you some insight into ultimately what's going to happen in this area unless you take action this evening. So let's look at the code. The code says basically that fences, hedges, or other screening plantings shall not exceed three and a half feet if located within a front yard or in the side street of a corner lot. In all other locations, like between houses, they can't be more than six feet in height, solid with an allowance of one additional foot of trellis, if agreed by the abusing property owners. That's kind of what these guys are building. Fences in excess of the height limits are subject to a fence height exception approval by the zoning administration. And the code only permits the zoning administrator to approve the fence height exception if every single one of the section eighteen sixteen oh-nine-oh D requirements are met, every single one of them. One of those requirements does in fact relate to safety. Subsection D one says the fence must not create hazards by impairing the view of traffic exiting or entering the subject property or neighboring property. Uh-oh, okay. Darn it. How do I go back? Wind up. Oh, no, don't do this to me now. There we go. Okay, there. Okay, so I've looked at the sidelines down Murray from fifty-three's driveway. There it is. The lower fifty-five inches of that portion is a solid, unbroken series of adjacent planks without any gap or spacing between the planks. The fence completely blocks the view of children, animals, bicyclists along the fence line coming this way. Okay, but the administrator's representative that, in the city engineer's viewpoint, does know a hazard. This is the view looking down Murray. What do you think? I think that the prior fence would avoid the hazard of not being able to see children walking along Murray in this westerly direction. One of the nine, of the nine members who wrote, six specifically mentioned safety as a concern. But the safety that they concern, that they are concerned about is that the owners have small children, and so do some of the neighbors. And the fence keeps the kids safe inside the yard. You know, if by safe we mean it keeps them out of the street, yes, absolutely. The proposed fence keeps them safe, but so does the old one. And in a few years, once those young children are old enough to know better, or they don't need to be as closely supervised, or they've grown, or the families moved, that safety concern will be gone, and this fence will remain. And of those nine neighbors, five mentioned safety in the context of the stop sign that you see here. We all agree that drivers blow through that stop sign endangering everyone, not just the owners of fifty-three Murray. But the solution is moving the stop sign and reconfiguring the intersection, and I'm under the impression that the Public Works Director may be addressing this issue, and perhaps he can speak to that. In any event, the proposed fence is not the solution, and once the stop sign issue is addressed, which it should be, the rationale for permitting the proposed fence will be gone. Frankly...
Can you leave that slide up there?
Can I do it?
I have a question.
Yes. Am I going to go back to the?
Yes, please, through the mayor. Question for staff. Where's the property line in that slide? Is that, in other, in other words, is, is that?
I would, I would need to look at a site plan in order to give you that information.
Is that part of the fence encroaching into the public right-of-way?
Yes.
So could the property line be that seam in the concrete?
It's possible. I would need to look at that site plan. There is a site plan in your schedule.
You said it was ten feet.
Ten feet long.
No, ten feet.
Back this way?
Ten feet into the property.
It's four by, it's a, Julia, back here.
Are there further questions on this? Should I continue?
We haven't had an answer.
Yeah, it's, it's just behind the opening of the gate.
So it's further back out of the picture, the property line?
Correct.
And then coming toward the viewer?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, please continue.
Thank you. Frankly, that stop sign I think is more noticeable in this image than with the new fence. To me, the real issue, though, is subsection D four, that the proposed fence will be compatible with the scale, the mass, and the architectural character of structures in the neighborhood. By the way, it's the real issue because I figure I'm losing on the prior one. I think this is a better one, which in this case means fences in the neighborhood, right? The architectural scale of structures in the neighborhood, that's fences. My submission that you already have reflects that many of the fences in the neighborhood are higher than three and a half feet, and I'm going to guess that very few of them have a fence height exception. In fact, I think it was represented that none do perhaps since nineteen ninety-seven. This is the home that's directly across from fifty-three. It's a corner lot, and its fence, including this shrubbery, looks like it's about twenty feet tall. But it's a good example, but is it a usable example of structures in the neighborhood? No, it's not. First, is there a fence height exception for it? No, there's not. In which case, it's non-conforming, arguably illegal, and it shouldn't be used as evidence of the character of the neighborhood. If that was the case, then the exceptions would swallow the rule. Second, it's a corner lot, and by the way, fences on corner lots are supposed to be three and a half feet tall now, so the twenty-foot fence would never be allowed. And it can't be considered an example of what would be permitted. Third, the front edge of the house looks like this. This is the front of the house. This is a side yard, and it, by the way, does have a sidewalk. There is no fence in front of the house. I'm not suggesting that the city demand fifty-two Murray take down their fence. It's been there longer than I have, and while I'm not sure what grandfathered in is, grandfathered is, I'm sure that that's grandfathered in, as many others are. Similarly, this is the fence that is east of fifty-three. It's the, it's the shared, shared fence. Okay? This again is a fence that nobody would object to, even though it's over three of the fence, but that really isn't a factor. But to the extent that it's taken into account, and a half feet. One reason is it's not at the property line. It's not, you know, at with one exception, all of the eighteen neighbors that I spoke to thought the proposed fence the property line. It's way deep, so it's not something that anybody would object was ugly, a fortress, not keeping in character with the neighborhood, and in one case questioned to. Okay. Here are some other properties within three or four houses of the subject property. Three or four houses. whether they were hiding dead bodies behind the fence. Speaking of other factors that aren't factors, the administrator, in her response, suggested that my assertion that the proposed fence is three times higher than the average height of fences in the street isn't a factor. Well, I think it's an objective measurement of the norm. I mean, what better calculation is there than establishing the average height of neighborhood fences? It's twenty-seven inches, and this one is, I believe, eighty inches. I want to point out something else that's not a factor that was mentioned in the administrator's report. Privacy. The administrator, the administrator cites privacy as a basis for granting the permit, but privacy is not a factor that can be considered because when the code mandates that the height has to be three and a half feet for frontages, the code clearly is intended not to create privacy. In fact, to the contrary, it's intended to enhance neighborhood openness. Oops, I don't want to do that. Okay. I'd ask that the city council consider that this proposed fence and determine that if constructed, it would be out of character with this neighborhood, with the mass and the scale of fences. I'd ask that the council approve a fence like the prior fence. And I'd ask the council to consider that if they don't grant this appeal and they allow this fence to be constructed, it's that decision that will irreversibly create a precedent that can be used by other neighbors to construct, to construct similar fences. Murray could become an alley lined by seven-foot solid walls, and so could any other street. I'd ask the council to grant the appeal and deny the exception for this fence. To the extent I've got any remaining time, I'd like to speak once I've heard any other comments. I'll take any questions, or I can wait until afterwards.
Thank you very much. I think it'd be fine for council if there are any questions for the appellant to ask now. Councilmember Hillmer?
Would you recognize the condition at the end of Arbor being a unique circumstance where cars, especially when their lights are on, are headed right at the house?
Yeah.
Would you acknowledge that that's a unique condition along the street?
I can prove that it's not. So I live at seventeen Francis. I live directly at a T junction identical to fifty-three Murray. We have a fence that is open and light and perhaps forty-two inches and some change tall. And when cars come down...
What street?
Thank you. When cars come down Hillcrest, the lights of those vehicles point directly at our bungalow, directly at our bungalow.
That wasn't the question, comparing your properties. The question was, would you acknowledge that's a unique condition along the street?
No, I'm, I'm establishing that it's not because at our property, which is in the same neighborhood, where we have the same condition of a street with cars coming down, lights coming directly to the front of our property, we don't have a fence like this. And in fact, to deal with the situation, we constructed a Magnolia, we built or put in a Magnolia tree, and that tree blocks, blocks the lights. That's something that could be done in this instance. So it is not unique. It is comparable to an existing situation and home in the neighborhood.
There may be more than one unique condition along each street, and I would put that any property owner has the right to file for a fence height exception.
Naturally. However, there are conditions to approval, which I don't believe have been met in this case. And you seem, you seem to, you seem to focus on the fact that there could be lights shining into the property by vehicles as a basis for requesting the exception. I'm simply saying that there are other ways around that without this fence.
I can't argue with you.
And any other, Councilmember Morrison?
So, Mr. Harris, Mr. and Mrs. Gandy found letters that neighbors wrote to approving the fence, and where are your letters? From all those neighbors you've talked to?
Certainly, certainly. I have neighbors that don't want to be in the position of, of the position that I'm in.
Okay, so you don't have any facts that you have neighbors saying that because you have no letters? Just wanted to clarify that.
Councilwoman Morrison, the fact that I spoke to neighbors is in fact true and accurate.
Okay, I wish they wrote letters, like the other neighbors that approved the way the fence was. Just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, yeah, understood.
Councilmember Way?
So in your statement, you indicated that the fence was measured incorrectly.
Yeah.
And the staff indicate that it was seventy-two inches of solid wood and at the foot, fence post, seventy-six. Where did you take your measurements?
Yeah.
And it's the top of the fence post, and you write in your, here that it's eighty-four inches? Is that what you're claiming?
I think I have it at eighty-two inches. I don't have my submission in front of me, but yeah, that is, that is correct. That is not seventy-six inches. That's eighty-two inches. Measured from base to top.
From all those neighbors you've talked to?
Certainly. I have neighbors that don't want to be in the position of the position that I'm in.
Okay, so you don't have any facts that you have neighbors saying that because you have no letters? Just wanted to clarify that.
Councilwoman Morrison, the fact that I spoke to neighbors is in fact true and accurate.
Okay, I wish they wrote letters, like the other neighbors that approved the way the fence was. Just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, understood.
Councilmember Way?
So in your statement, you indicated that the fence was measured incorrectly.
Yeah.
And the staff indicate that it was 72 inches of solid wood and at the fence post, 76. Where did you take your measurements? And it's the top of the fence post, and you write in here that it's 84 inches? Is that what you're claiming?
I think I have it at 82 inches. I don't have my submission in front of me, but yeah, that is correct. That is not 76 inches. That's 82 inches, measured from base to top. If I'm measuring from here, maybe that's where the... I don't know what you measured from. That's correct.
Yeah.
So I guess the question then is this. So...
Hold on. Let's one time. Sorry, are you finished? Councilmember Way, are you finished?
You said from the ground, and you said from the base. Those are two different measurements because there's a slope about that much between the two.
I will clarify, I did not measure from the slope. I measured from the base of the actual fence.
Okay, so not from the ground.
Not from the street level, which is lower.
Yeah.
Then we measured from the base of the post.
Okay, Councilmember Way, did you have anything further?
No, Councilmember Morrison asked one of the questions I was interested in because when you stepped forward, you said you represented 17 neighbors, and I just wanted clarification also on who those individuals may be and what their concerns were, but that's unable to be provided, so thank you for that.
Other than by my representation, that's correct.
You're right. Anything else? Councilmember Chu, did you have anything separately you wanted to bring up at this time for the appellant? Okay, that's fine. Thank you. One more?
It's for staff, and it's the slide that showed the view from the driveway where I asked the question about the property line location. This is just a general question. When the city reviews encroachment permits for structures encroaching into the public right-of-way, what are the standards that are used with respect to sightlines for those encroachments?
So there are specific requirements for intersections. There are no specific dimensional requirements for driveways, so there's simply, in this case, a field visit, so looking at it from both angles. So we went to the site, and as a pedestrian or as a vehicle in the public right-of-way, we take a look at what the sightline distance is to the driveway. And then again, on another visit, we sit in the driveway as a driver who's pulling out of the driveway is and look at what the distance is, the sight distance is out to the street to determine if we think we have adequate sight distance to see a pedestrian or a vehicle coming. It should be noted that this fence is on the left side, looking at the house of the driveway, so the predominant sight distance is to the right side because that's the approaching vehicle direction. So that's the side that you look at for vehicle and bicycle sight distance, so this fence is not an issue for that. So you're simply looking at pedestrian sight distances in this case, and both from where the driver would sit in the driveway, looking out to the street, you have adequate sight distance to see a pedestrian approaching on that side of the street, and then also as a pedestrian walking, where a pedestrian would walk on that side of the street, you have adequate sightline to a driver who would be sitting in the driveway.
So based on your review, you're satisfied with the safety of this particular...
Correct.
...design? Thank you.
Okay, anything further? Since this is a public hearing, do we have anyone representing the applicant for this project? Yes, please approach the podium.
So I didn't have a thumb drive.
Thanks.
So my name's Matt Gandy, and my wife, Lancy, and I own the house in question. And I guess I'd say first, in preparing, I was thinking about graduate school classes on public speaking and how you're supposed to establish credibility with your audience before you begin. So let me start by saying I have no idea about the policies and procedures. I'm learning on the fly, and this has been a new experience for me, and I have no experience in front of city councils. So with that having been said, let me try to do my best to...
You're doing fine, thank you.
Thank you. Let me try to do my best to articulate. So as I was thinking about it, I said, a tremendous report put together by the town, they're experts on this. We have a very passionate neighbor who feels very strongly the other way and has done everything he can to articulate his position, so I tried to step back and think about looking at this from a different perspective, and that's what I'm going to try to take you through here briefly. On the first page of the presentation, I've just laid out kind of the order of events here, and there's a couple of points I just wanted to emphasize for you, which is, so by way of background, so we're new to the area, which is part of the reason why this is new to us. Moved here in 2014, rented this house for two and a half years, purchased it from the owners. We did a renovation, a pretty major interior renovation. We went through the town process of filing permits, completed the renovation, the town came out and checked it, we paid the money for $7,000 worth of permits. So I just want to establish the point of principle that this is not about sort of blatant disrespect for the town or anything. We did make a mistake. We then went on and started repairing and painting our fence. When we did that, the fence post collapsed, and we were in a position where we needed to replace it, so we built, we looked at the fence that we shared with our next-door neighbor. We extended the look of that fence and then extended it through the front yard and put a lattice on top where we intended to add greenery for our landscaping project we were ultimately planning to do. So we did make a mistake. As soon as it was brought to our attention, we went to the town, we worked through, went through the permit process, and sort of here we are. The rest of this, I think you all know. This is why we're here tonight. I've called this setting the record straight because the one thing I do feel strongly about is, even if you choose to rule against us on this matter, I do feel like there's been a selective representation of the facts from the appellant, and I want to present the facts as I see it as clearly as possible and try to paint that picture. I know the town's done that very capably already, but I'd like to try to do that as well. So if you look at page two, the first stop, so what I did was I went into Zillow, where you can see sightlines, and I just walked the neighborhood, right? And I looked at, I would say that here in each lot that I've put a fence, that represents either there's a hedgerow that from simply a visual perspective, it would seem might need a, could be a possible candidate for some type of exception. And as you can see, in this little area where the appellant likes to walk his dog, there are lots of examples here, and that's consistent, by the way, with what the town found as well. But I think there's a major limitation to this particular perspective, which is the perspective of the appellant. That is a very small piece of a very large neighborhood that we're a part of, Murray Park. And if you turn to the next page, you can skip the next page, but I just would make the other observation, which is that, sorry, if you look at Francis versus Murray, even among those two streets on page two, I am still, sorry, I missed a point, there's quite a big difference between those two. If you were to walk down Arbor, or Francis, rather, all the lots are roughly the same size. It's very uniform. There are very few fences. If you go down Murray, there's a big difference between the lots, and that has to do in part with the topography, the density, the foliage, et cetera. And as you go further into the neighborhood, which I'll come on to in a moment, you'll see, there's quite a lot of difference between the different parts of the neighborhood. So that's the first point of principle I wanted to establish. On page three, here's a different visual representation of the same point. If you look at these bar charts on the left side, left-hand side, you've got Murray Avenue. These represent the square footage of the lots. On the right-hand side, you've got Francis, and you don't have to look too hard to see the uniformity with which the houses exist on Francis and how uniform that is and how it looks on Murray. If you were to do our fence on Francis, it might be a different conversation, but when you look on Murray, it's a very different set of facts around the house. But again, that's not really the whole story, in my opinion. That's just a piece of it. On the next page, I've mapped out on Zillow what happens. If you go to the top right section of this chart here is our house, would be the green one, and the three stop signs in front of it. And as you continue down Murray Avenue into the neighborhood, all of these examples, again, the lots become much more varied, the topography changes, the density of the trees change. It's a very different picture from what it looks like just up front, close to Magnolia. And so my point would be, if your frame of reference is Francis, I could see why you would draw the conclusions that the appellant did. If you look at our house with reference to the rest of the neighborhood, which is much broader than that, it's actually all over the place that you can find what might be considered exceptions. And if you turn the next page, and just to orient you again, the blue dot is the appellant's house, and down here are the stop signs around our house on the bottom right. If you were to continue down Francis, Francis becomes a stell, and immediately as the street begins to bend, the whole thing changes again. There are plenty of examples of fence height exceptions, that possible fence height exceptions. Again, I'm not the professional here, but just using first principles and looking visually. So when I did that analysis, you know, there are 12 possible exceptions, as far as my eyes could see, in the little route in which he walks his dog. If you go through the whole neighborhood, there's like 28 is what I counted, potential. So maybe I get some of them wrong, but I think it's clear that there are plenty of examples of possible exceptions. Those exceptions vary in size, shape, some are fences, some are hedgerows, some are fences and hedgerows, and some are quite tall, some are lower, et cetera. My point is, in the context of the broader neighborhood, what we've done is not, does not stand out, in my opinion. So if you turn to page six, what do the neighbors think? Well, not only did we get eight letters, as you pointed out, Councilwoman Morrison, but we got the eight people who live directly around us within 300 feet of the house, which, as I understand it, is a really important standard for establishing that something is acceptable within a neighborhood. Every single one of those neighbors approved and wrote a letter on our behalf, which is on file. I've used this little icon here with children to show all the different places where the children live around here. We have 10 children that are seven or less, right within our house, and they run from yard to yard. They all value the safety of the, that the fence creates, not only for containing the fence, for containing the children in the yard, which was a point that was made. I think the town also commented on whether or not the sightlines are adequate. But if you were to look at these pictures properly, you know, from a slightly different perspective, you would see that the hedgerow that used to exist plus the fence were literally right next to the stop sign. The new configuration, which we discussed with the town, was cut at an angle to create much more distance and space between the fence and the stop sign, and that stop sign is much more clearly visible. And the only other thing I would mention is, my wife actually backed out of our driveway and was hit by somebody not observing, you know, coming speeding towards that stop sign, planning not to observe it, and was rear-ended. And so I promise you, when we thought about how to build the fence, we did not try to do something that was going to be less safe. We've been through that already. We really believe we've done something that's far more, has far more safety. I'd like to just also point out, well, I'll just move to my concluding remarks because I don't want to take too much time, but yeah, I feel like the presentation of the facts from the appellant zero in and magnify the facts that substantiate his position and ignore or omit the facts that are inconvenient to his position, which is why I wanted to present it in this way. And I think the findings of the experts at the town clearly substantiate that. You know, a layman's walk through the neighborhood, from my view, you know, and using simple observation shows the following to me. With the pictures that were shown, the houses were selected specifically to support the position. There were many other houses that would be counter to his position, point number one. The angles of the photos that were taken were convenient, I thought, and actually, you know, if you were to look at it in a more balanced way, I think you would see that some of the pictures don't paint the full picture. They painted a portion of the picture. On that note, and I'm going to come on to this at the end, the picture that was used, I just want to point out, and we'll come back to this, the picture that was used at an angle, looking back at the stop sign that he used, he's standing on my property taking that picture, which I object to and I don't think is appropriate, but we'll come back to that for a moment. That's the only way you could have that picture taken. I think that in so doing, the appellant failed to acknowledge the many differences between the two streets. I think the appellant ignored more than half of the neighborhood that we live in and focused on a very small part that's very important to him, which I value, but again, is not the complete picture. And I also think that in so doing, by doing that, he's missed many, many examples of fences, hedgerows, gated driveways, many of the other things you will see if you drive a little bit further into Murray Park past our house. You know, in conclusion, the fence, I think it looks great. It's going to look even better if you guys approve it. It'll look even better when it has the foliage that we had always intended to put on. We've hired a landscape architect. This is a complete misrepresentation of our house. Those things were delivered on a Friday. Somehow, he got to my house on a Saturday. By Tuesday, they were moved. They're not potted. They're three and a half feet taller than they actually are. Sorry, they are potted. They're not planted. They're three and a half feet, they appear here three and a half feet taller than they actually are, and we're already working with site plans with my landscape architect, with the town, to make sure that whatever we do in that front yard is approved. So this is not an accurate representation of what the house looks like if you weren't able to go walk around it. I would reiterate that I think the fence is safe, adds to the safety of that intersection, which has, by the way, three stop signs. I'd add the point that the pictures from this perspective are again misleading and make the fence look much bigger than it is because the street slopes down like this. I would just note that for everybody. Again, I think that's an improper representation. And I think, lastly, you know, we will complete our landscaping project with the full approval. That completes sort of my position with regard to the house. There's something that I regret to do, but I need to do as a matter of record. The, and I'm just going to do this because, you know, we've had to talk to the police, and I just, and they've recommended that we document everything as much as we can. The level of harassment that we've undergone to get to this point for this fence is absolutely inexcusable. My wife, just to spend a moment on this, lived in, after high school, left and went to Nepal to work with Tibetan refugees as an 18-year-old girl. She lived in India and worked at Mother Teresa's Hospice Clinic. She carried a 40-patient hospice workload in the Bronx. She's not easily intimidated. She's terrified of this man. In the last hearing, he screamed at her. He leaned over her and tried to intimidate her. It's all on the record, if you want to hear the tapes. They've been, when we were doing our renovations, they were repeatedly inside our house. The contractor called us on several occasions, one time asking us if he should call the police. One time, my wife had to come home and found them there. The police, we ultimately had to call the police because he followed my wife while she was pushing our 10-month-old baby to Rustic Bakery and sought to intimidate her, walking around her erratically, acting very odd, and ultimately bumped into her stroller as he exited, which I think was deliberate, and so did she, as she was putting our infant daughter in there. And that led to us calling the police, where regrettably, we didn't document all this stuff because we thought it was just, you know, nosy neighbors. But that's the level of harassment we've been through. And so when I see this picture, I would, if it's okay with the council, I'd request that I can have a copy of that picture, which was taken clearly standing on my driveway because unfortunately, I've got a terrified wife, and I need to make it a matter of record for me with the police again. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for that. Does anyone else want to speak on behalf of the applicant? Yeah, if you have to, does the council have any questions for the applicant before we move on? I didn't see any. Any questions? Okay, at that point, I think we've heard from the appellant. So I think we've heard from the appellant and the applicant at this point, and I think we can open it up to public comment. Does that sound...
Yeah.
Yeah. Public hearing. So any members of the public wish to approach the podium and provide comments on the appeal? Please. And for this part of the proceeding, we'll keep everything to three minutes. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Tamsin McCracken. I live at 17 Francis Avenue. Philip is my husband. We're pretty close to filing a defamation lawsuit over that. That is an absolute mischaracterization, mischaracterization of a whole lot of stuff. But back to the fence. There's a photo he could pull up on his computer, in fact, he has it pulled up, of me standing in front of that post. We measured it. The post, from the base of the post to the top of the post is 80 inches. We've covered that. I don't know how they get 76 inches, but...
I've seen enough, thank you.
Whatever.
I've seen enough, thank you.
There is not a single other solid fence on Murray. Not one. There is one other fence that is six feet tall. It is open lattice work. There are a few other fences that are over the height, but they're hedges. One of the hedge fences is quite tall, but it's been there forever. None of the other fences on Murray are anything approaching this. I don't think I've ever been at a hearing about what a neighbor has done. I normally would never do that. I don't want to be unneighborly. The other 17 or 18 people we spoke with also don't want to be unneighborly. That fence is unneighborly. If everyone else on Murray built that fence, we would be living in something that looked like a penitentiary. I don't think it meets the exceptions. I don't think it's anywhere close to what the neighborhood has elsewhere, even if you ignore Francis, which admittedly has low fences and sidewalks on half of it. I don't think it should be approved.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to provide a comment on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close. Yes. One of the hedge fences is quite tall, but it's been there forever. None of the other fences on Murray are anything approaching this. I don't think I've ever been at a hearing about what a neighbor has done. I normally would never do that. I don't want to be unneighborly. The other 17 or 18 people we spoke with also don't want to be unneighborly. That fence is unneighborly. If everyone else on Murray built that fence, we would be living in something that looked like a penitentiary. I don't think it meets the exceptions. I don't think it's anywhere close to what the neighborhood has elsewhere, even if you ignore Francis, which admittedly has low fences and sidewalks on half of it. I don't think it should be approved.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to provide a comment on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close. Yes.
So, I could appreciate Mr. Gandy's comments about how Murray Park has distinct parts to it. And I would agree that, in the east section of Murray Park, in this neighborhood, that everything I've said is true and accurate. And the photographs are the photographs. There's no effort to manipulate them, other than to represent our section of Murray Park. I would agree. I don't go up Murray westbound. I have no reason to go up Murray westbound. I don't really know what it's like. I may have been up there honestly, half dozen times in 15 years. My sense is it's kind of a canyon, okay? I mean, if you look at the first house on the right, it's up on a hill, the next house on the right's up on a hill. It kind of tails off and dead ends, so I kind of get that. My recollections, there's a lot of vegetation there. I don't know if there are any specifically tall, constructed fences of this nature, but absolutely, there is a lot of vegetation, there's a lot more privacy, natural privacy. That's absolutely true. I guess the question then is, so what's the breakpoint? Right? I mean, these are two kind of distinct different neighborhoods. So, this house happens to be located, if you will, sort of right at the breakpoint here. You know, if you're, if you're east of it, it really is as I've described, and if you're west of it, it's as Mr. Gandy has described. I'll grant you that. So why does this house get to be changed and put into the bucket of natural vegetation, tall, tall structure fences? Because if you do this one, then don't you start marching down the streets and changing the nature of the street as you go south? So maybe that's the issue here. We see it from one perspective, and maybe neighbors further to the west, from a different perspective. So take that into account. And as my wife said, you know, the monologue that Mr. Gandy made is utterly, utterly untrue. I actually wouldn't be able to recognize Mrs. Gandy if she was in the room. It's that simple. So, and we discussed this with the police, and no action was taken. I understand that they're hyper-aware and hyper-concerned, and maybe that's the reason why other neighbors aren't willing to stand up and object to this, because they're afraid of the repercussions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to comment on this agenda item? Seeing none, let's return it back to the council for comments and deliberation. Councilmember Chu?
I had a question for staff or city manager or city attorney. You know, a large part of this discussion has to do with what I would just lump into a general term of design review. Is that, is that part of the scope of what we're going to discuss here as part of the appeal? Asking that as a matter of process.
I guess I'll, Neil Toft, Planning Building Director, I'll field that one. The fence height exception actually is a, is a specific application in itself, so it's not quite the same as design review. There are findings relative to compatibility and scale, so, some of that, but then it's also streetscape, so it has some very specific types of findings to it. And I think on the question of, over the years, we deal with many of these projects, the zoning administrator often is reviews fence height exceptions and approves many, denies many, or modifies many of these applications. And part of it is, what is the site conditions as well? So, while, while the findings are not very specific, sometimes the issue of the need or the unique conditions of the property relative to surrounding properties or roadways, lights, things like that, do, are issues that come into consideration. Certainly, that's in practice. So, we felt that, the zoning administrator felt that in this condition, there were reasonable circumstances by which to grant it, and that it didn't, did meet the, adequately met the findings for approval.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else from the council? Further discussion, comments? Seeing none, I guess it's time for...
Well, yeah, we're just kind of thinking.
Okay. All right. Well, let's give you a moment to think.
If we, if we go back to, what are we talking about here? Specifically, Section 18.16.090, Paragraph D, that's where, you know, five findings need to be made for a fence height exception. Having been on the site, I, if there's two things that might be a potential problem, I'll do it in reverse order. I think the most significant part of this discussion has been about either safety or the compatibility. On the safety aspect, I didn't see anything, and I would concur with staff on that, particularly on the eastern side, because of the beveled nature that it, that extends the sightlines up to the intersection. I will say, however, that being out there for the good part of 15 or 20 minutes, nobody stops at the stop signs anyway, so, I mean, if they're contributing to a safety problem out there, it's themselves. You know, so the neighbors need to get together, since they do have a neighborhood association, and, you know, they, they need to resolve that amongst themselves. The second issue, though, is the one of compatibility, and that's why I asked the question about how much design review plays into this decision, because the one thing that I've struggled with in recent years with things related to fences is the total enclosure of a home from the street side. And, you know, that's effectively what we see here. In just about every neighborhood, we, you know, that I happen to have a fairly good walking knowledge of, you know, the fences, when they're of man-made materials, in other words, even though fences are considered, hedges and things are considered fences, the man-made structures tend to be within a certain range, but even when they have them built, unless it's part of a side yard, or it's a frontage on Magnolia, where you have specific exceptions, where you really do need the privacy and the screening. You don't have a total wall covering literally the entirety of the streetscape of the, of the home. So, I guess that's why I'm not on the planning commission, because it's hard for me, it's always been hard for me to impose my own, let's just say, sense of aesthetics into what I consider somebody's personal choice in terms of how they want to live. So if, if there was any compromise between the neighbors and, and the applicant on this, you know, I would say, yeah, maybe open up the fence a little bit, reduce it to the point where it doesn't, you know, cover up literally the whole frontage of the home and all the way around its perimeter, at least on the front side without, and you can still keep the kids safe. Once they can reach the latch, they're going to get out anyway. So, you know, that's kind of where I'm at, at this point. I would say that I would have to, aside from my personal views, look at this dispassionately and have to deny the appeal.
Okay. Thank you for that. Councilmember White?
Thank you, Larry, for bringing up that fence height information, Attachment 7, if those of you are following along in the packet, because I think that helps me in clarifying some of the arguments that came forward with the five points. And also, thank you to the staff for clarifying some of the issues about safety and sightlines, and Director Skinner about that, because I think that helps in my understanding of whether they have met this ordinance exception. I think, to me, it comes down to the argument of number four, which is, the height and design of the fence will be compatible with the scale, mass, and architectural character of structures in the neighborhood. I think Mr. Gandy put a very compelling argument forward, that that Murray Park neighborhood, in which his home sort of begins the larger lot sections, is a very diverse neighborhood in fence structures, comparative to the flat areas near Francis M. Murray, which are right adjacent to Magnolia, which are very small lots. I visited the site, I saw Councilmember Morrison there. I visited the site twice. The second time, went up further into the Murray Park neighborhood, which is a distinct neighborhood that goes all the way over to, I can't remember the name of the street now, that's even further over than where you are. And it's a diversity of lot sizes, a diversity of home sizes, a diversity of fences that are in there, foliage. There are a lot of houses that, in my observation, do have larger structures there, based on what the size of their lot and their needs and concerns are. So, I think that this, there is an argument to be held that this number four is met, that it does fit within the broader character, maybe not within that one specific block, but I think we need to look at the broader character of it. That's where I am now, so I'd like to hear what the rest of council has to say. I'm sorry that we've had some situations go on there, and I'll leave that for further discussion, because now our, later, because our focus now is just on this specific fence and this specific property, and not on what may happen in the future.
Okay. Thank you for that. Councilmember Morrison?
Yeah, Catherine, thank you. I also agree with lot diversity. I'm also pleased that Larkspur has a fence height exception because of that. I went around the neighborhood, I noticed there are other fences, somewhat a little, your height, and some not. I think your fence is beautiful. I, these appeals really, I'm just sorry that appeals occur. Neighbors just can't talk it out. It does bother me quite a bit. Mr. Harris, I just don't understand how you're so concerned about the, this site, the sightline from the driveway, because it's really not your driveway. I understand about the three stop signs. I went in the driveway to take a look, to see if there's a concern. Our staff did an excellent job covering all the issues, all the concerns. They approved, and I support our staff, I think they do, they know what they're doing. They're professionals, they're well-educated, and I was very pleased that the staff agreed to approve the fence. I wish you did apply for a permit. I think that is a lesson learned. So, with that, I'm going to agree with, with Larry Chu. I'm going to deny the appeal.
Councilmember Helmer?
I think it's unfortunate that we're in a position of everybody defending a position on what has taken place. I think the observation that this point along Murray Avenue relative to east, toward Magnolia versus west, toward the hillside part of the neighborhood, is a valuable consideration. I think there's a change that takes place relative to the type of lots, that takes place just about here, and part of the discussion here recognizes that this is kind of a transition place along the street. Recognizing that, there's kind of an argument each way, if, if we were talking about something proposed and not as built. So the question to me is, would this, had this been proposed before construction, and the city an opportunity to review it before construction, would the resulting fence be different? And I think a case could be made for either way, so I can understand this is a very difficult discussion, looking at it in hindsight, which I'm sure leads to everybody placed in a position of defending their interests, which I find a very difficult place for the, for the council to be put into, because there are, no matter what the council decides, we have to be very careful that this is reviewed as a, as a case-by-case basis, and be very careful about explaining that what is decided here does not indicate a trend or a desired pattern for the part of the neighborhood where this is not typical. So I want to make that point on the record, that from my standpoint, this is a unique property, it may even be a transitional property along Murray, and that the conditions for this particular property are unique. And I think that plays into the discussion. Now whether or not a more open fence would have resulted had the project been reviewed prior to construction, I don't know, but I, this is where I have to trust our staff. I think they rightly make observations relative to the findings, and I myself can make those findings relative to the five points for the consideration of the exception. But again, I don't want to render non-significant the fact that where this application, where this application to have been presented prior to construction, things might have gone differently. I want to be honest about that. So, I'll support the staff recommendation, Mr. Mayor, in this, in this particular, very specific case.
Okay. Thank you for that. Anything else from the council? I just have a brief comment I'd like to make.
First of all, I want to thank both the appellant and the applicant for making very solid presentations on both sides, and we very much appreciate the work that you all put into the presentations that you made this evening, so thank you for that. Like other members of the council, I did go down to the neighborhood and poke around a bit. It is an attractive fence, no denying that, and it is, you know, in my own personal aesthetic view, not incompatible with the character of the way in which other properties have similar features. Like Councilmember Helmer, I think I can make the findings that would support the action that's been recommended, recommended by staff. But also like Councilmember Morrison, I am a little troubled whenever we have a situation where the city council is called upon to validate actions that, kind of after the fact, and approve conduct that might have taken a different course had our practices and procedures been followed from the outset. And like Councilmember Helmer, I want to emphasize that any action that I might support this evening should not be considered a precedent or an endorsement of the way in which this particular matter might be handled. It's very important, you guys are sophisticated people, obviously, you bought this house, did a significant renovation, you understood the permitting requirements with respect to the major parts of the renovation. It's a little surprising that this one kind of slipped through the cracks. That shouldn't happen. And again, I don't want to create any suggestion that the council endorses anyone not taking seriously all our permitting and regulatory requirements. That said, I do think I can support adoption of the findings that staff has recommended, and staff's recommendation for denying the appeal. So, does anyone else from the council have any further last moment comments on this? So with that, I guess the motion would be to adopt the findings that have been proposed and take action with respect to the appeal itself. Zach?
There's a resolution.
And there is, adopting the resolution to accomplish that.
That is staff's recommendation that denies the appeal and upholds the zoning administrator's determination based on a set of findings that are attached as existing.
So just simply approval of the resolution would incorporate the findings as part of that?
Yes, as long as the council believes that the findings recommended by staff can be made based on the...
Yes, okay. That's helpful. I was, I wanted to make sure I got that clarified on the record.
So I'll be happy to make the motion.
So, the, yes, the resolution would be, resolution number 5817.
That's correct.
And Councilmember Morrison would like to make the motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Thank you very much, again, for appearing. We appreciate your effort and involvement in this process. We appreciate your effort and involvement in this process. And that will close agenda. We have one more item, I think, on the agenda. That closes agenda item number 7.2. We move on to business items. We have one, 8.1, appointment to the library board and the Marin Commission on Aging. This was, these are issues that were actually considered while I was absent, so do we have any need for a staff report on this, or do we just go, go?
No, it's always sort of your item, Mr. Mayor, the council.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Nice job.
Yeah, good, good job. So this is a, this is for the council. Do we have any, any suggestions about how to deal with these appointments?
Ask a question of staff, Mr. Mayor. Could we be reminded of the applicants for these two positions?
Wait in a minute, I apologize, I don't have that.
I have.
Councilmember Morrison's going to save the day, I didn't have that with me.
So we have Andy Ravel.
First, the Commission on Aging, please.
Ah, the Commission on Aging. Okay, that, I don't know if I have that one. I think I have library...
Did we have more than one?
Yes.
Did we have one applicant for that?
I definitely have one.
We did.
And it's Judith Safran.
For the, for the commission?
That's correct. You had one applicant.
I would move that Judy Safran be appointed to the Commission on Aging, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, do we have a second on that motion?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, so let's go on to the library.
Okay, do we have any applicants? So we have Andy Ravel, Jeffrey Bosley, Lorraine Ferrand, Barbara Friday, and Gabriel Poulsen. Gabriel Poulsen was the IT person. Do you want me to go to remind you who's who?
I think I can.
I can remember. No, I'm fine.
Okay. So I have a recommendation.
Please, please go with your recommendations.
So I, I really, okay, everyone was excellent. I want to make sure that we express that, and thank you so much for applying, and this was a very tough decision, because I wish there is five open seats, so we can say, yes, all of you are on.
I, I agree with that, that was good.
Great, great, great. So the two that, that I'm, I'm torn between would be Andy Ravel and Gabriel Poulsen. Gabriel Poulsen is, is an IT expert, but I'm going to recommend Andy Ravel, and I'll tell you why. Andy came, he was part of the threesome that came to the council meeting to say, I'm here with my friends and with others, and we want to support the library and do some fundraising, and just get more involved in the community. That was really nice. Both, Kevin and I met with Andy to talk about fundraising for the library, so he was very enthusiastic and wants to get involved. He does have two kids, five and three, that is important. He also raised funds for his local park, which was the Heatherwood. So Andy's been involved for quite a while, and only wants to continue making Larkspur a better place, and really wants to focus on the library, fundraising, and also running the library, and just making it a little more sophisticated, where Gabriel was, was a great IT person, knowledgeable. I just think Andy has really pursued us and wants to get involved.
And Andy lives over Rose Lane, doesn't he?
No. He lives in Heather, Heather Way, on Heather Way.
I echo that sentiment and would support that nomination.
As would I.
Oh, super.
Yeah, I, I think probably the two critical factors are the fundraising capabilities. I mean, that is really key right now. The other thing is, you know, I kind of smile when I say this, he's got a three and five-year-old, will make it a challenge to him that they get to see a new library in their, in their lifetime as a student here.
I also think that Andy represents an age group that...
Andy represents an age group that will be looking to, to provide the next generation of leadership, so I think that's very important to, for, for that, to be recognized in this decision.
Yeah, I agree with that. I, I didn't have an opportunity, because I was absent, to, to interview the other candidates, but as Ann points out, we did talk to him in another setting, and his enthusiasm and commitment to this is, was kind of infectious, quite honestly, so I certainly would support that. So we have a, we have a recommendation. Do we need a formal motion?
You should make a motion.
I'll move Andy Ravel be appointed to the library board.
Do we have a second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, after...
Oops, sorry.
No, now that you're done, I was wondering before you adjourn, if I could make two comments?
Yes, please.
The first is I was remiss, we have a guest, and if I could ask Mr. Skinner to introduce him, I'd really like him to do that, I should have done that in my city manager's report.
Oh, well then, please do it now, it's fine.
Good evening. With me tonight is our intern who's with us for a few weeks this summer, a few months. He's a student, a Marin Catholic, I'll let him talk a little bit more. But this is a program that's run by MTC. They fund interns for public agencies, and so typically, these are students that have expressed an interest in the engineering field, and so it gives them an opportunity to get out into the real world and work with a public agency, and hopefully to get more reaffirmation that they want to continue and go into public sector and engineering. So Miles is working on a number of projects, we're trying to get as much as we can out of him for the next few weeks. He's a whiz on our website, updating some of our information, and he's going to help out with our storm drain master plan, as well as working with our crew to do some of the punchless work here. So I'll let Miles introduce himself and...
Great, thank you, welcome, Miles.
Thank you. Yeah, so when I was looking for some things to do this summer, I saw the MTC internship and knew that, you know, when I saw this position for Larkspur, I thought it would be a great fit, because I'm going to school at Marin Catholic just up the road, and I worked for a year down at Donut Alley here, so, and knew the local area quite well, so I was interested in engineering and thought this would be a great fit. And, you know, I'm only a week and a half in, but I feel like I've learned so much, and yeah, Julian's right on that, he's already got me working on multiple projects, and so, yeah, going to be a great time.
Well, we're, we're going to take advantage of you, don't worry.
The MTC pays you, right?
Yes, they do.
Good.
Yeah.
Are you entering your senior year?
Yes, this is going to be my final year, so it's a lot of fun, but also very stressful.
We're very happy to have you part of...
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, please.
Miles, how many miles of pavement are there in the city of Larkspur?
Ooh, that's a good question. I don't know if... Thirty-two.
We didn't hear that.
Yeah.
And Miles, you're very...
But now I know, right?
Now you're very lucky to have him as a mentor, that's a great choice.
You're right, yeah.
Yep, and Marin Catholic's my alma mater.
And, yeah. Yeah, it's changing a lot, and continues to change every year, so, yeah, it's a lot of fun.
Proud to have you working for us, Miles.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for having me. It's, yeah, it's been a treat to be here.
Okay, now put them to work. Okay, you had two, two items?
I did, the next one's a little more somber, I have a request to the council with respect to adjournment this evening. On Monday, Larkspur resident Enzo Deleon passed away. Mr. Deleon's actually been, through our contract service, the janitor here at City Hall for quite a while, and his widow is actually our other janitor, so as you can imagine, it's a devastating blow, they're part of our extended family, and so we'd appreciate if you might adjourn in Mr. Deleon's honor tonight.
It would be, it would be our honor to do that. Now, we have a, we have a special way of adjournment tonight, because we're continuing.
And I'm sorry to follow that up with something so mundane, but it's just a reminder that you, we're asking you to adjourn tonight's meeting to August 26th, so that the...
July 26th.
Sorry, July 26th, so that the July 26th meeting will be an adjourned regular meeting.
Okay, but we can still do this adjournment in Mr. Deleon's honor, so...
Absolutely, just to a date specific.
Yes, okay, that's fine. And Councilmember Helmer, you wanted to offer that, or could I just go ahead?
I also have a request, Mr. Mayor, that, that a, possibly the July 26th meeting or first meeting possible, that we adjourn a, a meeting in memory of Dick Wall, recently passed away. Dick was a very active member on, on city boards and commissions for decades, and, and I just learned of his passing over the weekend, and I'm, I think it was, it might have been a couple of months ago, but I think appropriate to acknowledge his service to the city.
Yeah, I, I think that's, that's, I'd only learned about that just in the last couple of days as well, and I think that for the next meeting, that would be appropriate.
But I'd be pleased to move tonight's meeting be adjourned in honor of Mr. Deleon.
In honor of Mr. Deleon. Thank you, any comments or...
I'll say it in that.
Okay, we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, the meeting is adjourned until next time.
July 26th.
July 26th, okay, thank you. Thank you. Good night, everyone.